Good evening. I will call the May Common Council Meeting to order. All the persons are present. Thank you all for being here this evening and acknowledging on your remotes this evening. Item three on our agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a silent prayer in lieu of invocation. I invite you to please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Item number four hundred on our agenda is the explanation of the visitor's speaking procedure. Those individuals wishing to address the body tonight may do so after being recognized by an alderperson in which you'll be invited to speak at the podium. Make sure the microphone is on. There will be a green light that lights up when you're on, so you can be picked up for the live stream and the recording that's happening for this evening. Your limit is five minutes, and you are required to speak on items that appear on our agenda this evening. We'll move into item number five, which is the administration of oath of office for Scott Killian of the Wisconsin Rapids Police Department. Scott, would you come forward? And Sue, Chief, please.
I, Scott Killian.
I, Stephanie Brewin.
As an officer of the Department.
As an officer of the Department.
For the city of Wisconsin Rapids.
For the city of Wisconsin Rapids.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Wisconsin.
And of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of said office.
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Along with that tradition, we're going to move into item number six, which is the oath of office for the office of mayor and for alderpersons.
I, Zachary Brewin.
I, Zachary Brewin.
Having been elected to the office of mayor.
Having been elected to the office of mayor.
For the city of Wisconsin Rapids.
For the city of Wisconsin Rapids.
Swear that I will support.
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially.
And will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of said office.
Discharge the duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
And for the, for alderpersons that were on the five, I'm sorry. Thank you. Got Joe joining through the special. I think you were on the ballot, Terry. Not in my district.
I, Zachary Brewin. Having been elected to the office of Alderman District.
Having been elected to the office of Alderman District.
For the city of Wisconsin Rapids.
For the city of Wisconsin Rapids.
Swear that I will support.
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially.
And will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of said office.
Discharge the duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
Item seven on the election, on the agenda this evening is the election of a council president. I will open the floor to nominations for a council president. I hear a microphone, alderperson Dolan.
Nominate Jim Stack.
Nomination for Mr. Stack.
I'll nominate Terry Dolan.
We have a nomination for Terry Dolan. Are there any other nominations for council president? Are there any other nominations for council president? Seeing no further nominations, I will close nominations. We will now do a paper ballot, or we want to do it another way? Do we want to do an open vote? Or we want to do a paper?
Put the district number down.
District number and your choice between alderperson Stack and alderperson Dolan for council president. We have to have a revote. Unfortunately, I don't get to break the tie. Fortunately, however you want to look at that. Unless you have another way of deciding, or flip a coin, draw a card. I'll let the city attorney flip the coin. Always trust the attorney.
Maybe just two unanimous.
I'll take, entertain a motion to conduct the selection by coin toss with heads going.
So we have all in favor? Any opposed?
Go ahead and, before we can see it.
I think it's heads.
All right, congratulations, alderperson Stack will be acting as the role of council president for the next year. The lucky quarter, Jim. Don't spend it. Item number eight, the election of an alderperson member to the planning commission. With that, I'd open nominations for an alderperson member to the planning commission. Anyone wishing to make a nomination for an alderperson member of the planning commission? Somebody's got to do it.
I'd nominate Alderman Tophurkey.
A nomination for Alderman Furkey. Is there any additional nominations? Seeing none, we'll close nominations, move into a vote. I'd ask for unanimous consent. Anybody oppose unanimous consent? All right. That pass, we'll move on. Move on to item number nine, is the election of an alderperson member to the park and recreation commission. I'll open the floor to nominations. Who wants to serve on the park and rec commission?
I nominate Alderman Hepp.
I have a motion for Alderman Hepp. Hepp is already my appointee, if I'm not mistaken, to the, so he is out of the running. Hepp's already on it.
Then I pull that nomination back.
Anybody else wish to make a nomination for the park and rec commission? Anybody else? It's too early. Mayor?
I'll nominate Tom.
We have a nomination of alderperson Rayom. Is there any additional nominations?
And I nominate, nominate Steve Coth.
We have another nomination for Steve Coth. Any additional nominations? Tom withdraws. We will close nominations, and I'd entertain, I would ask for unanimous consent. Anybody opposed? All right. Welcome back to the park and rec commission. Steve, election of two non-voting members to the waterworks and lighting commission. Open the floor to nominations. Anyone wishing to nominate someone to serve to the waterworks and lighting commission? You guys created those positions. Alderperson Kellogg is a nomination. Is there additional nominations? Who is the second person, Scott? Do you recall? Steve was the additional. Anybody else, Steve, for anyone else wishing to serve on that important, serve in that important capacity? We can go with one if we, no one else. Sorry, Joe?
I nominate Joel Zerflu.
We've got two nominations. I'd accept, I'd close nominations. Anyone objecting? Calling unanimous consent? All right. Movement item ten, I'm sorry, eleven, election of an alderperson member of the special operations committee. Open the floor to nominations.
I'll nominate Terry Dolan.
Alderperson Dolan. Anyone else wish to be nominated to the special ops? I'd ask for unanimous consent. Anybody opposed? Any none? Move on to item twelve. Item twelve is my appointments to various commissions, committees, and boards. Attachment number one in your packets. I'll entertain a motion on the appointments that were submitted for your approval.
Shall we move?
The motion by Stack, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dolan. All in favor? Actually, I'm sorry, please cast your ballots through the machine. Actually, Dolan, can you hit second on your remote? Forgot we're going to switch to that process. You have to confirm your votes. Got one more yet. Motion passes, eight i's, zero nays. Item thirteen, my appointments to standing council committees. Alderpersons, it is my honor to appoint you all to your committees. As it stands, I propose no changes to the existing committee structure, which I will read for all of your knowledge and for the public's knowledge. Public Works Committee, Tom Rayom, Stephen Coth, Scott Kellogg, Human Resources Committee, Todd Furkey, Jim Stack, Scott Kellogg, and the Finance and Property Committee, the Terry Dolan, Greg Hepp, and Joe Zerflu. I will give you now two minutes to caucus and elect your chairpersons and, chairpersons and secretaries, and file the reports with the city clerk. I should probably read that off. So all committees' roles will be, actually, I'm sorry, public works, actually, all the committee chairs remain the same, secretaries have changed. I won't read that, that's a minor detail. Item sixteen, fifteen, reading of the minutes of the previous meeting. Attachment number two in your packets.
Make a motion to accept the minutes from the.
We've got a motion to accept by Coth.
Second.
And a second by Dolan, if you could hit your button. Move into discussion. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor? Actually, please cast your ballots. Sorry. Eight i's, zero nays, that motion passes. Good evening, council members, staff, and those here or watching from home. As with each month's update, I share notable items taking place since our last council meeting. The mayor's youth council continues to meet and discuss upcoming projects. First, we are planning an event around Kids to Park Day sometime in June. The point is to get kids outdoors active and seeing what our public parks have to offer, and a date will be established in the, at their next meeting. Additionally, the aquatic survey that they have been working on has been distributed to high school students in the area, those ninth through twelfth graders. The surveys were wrapped up at Lincoln last week and assumption yesterday, and once they're compiled, the findings will be shared with all of you. The mayor's council on sustainability continues to work with the U.S. Conference of Mayors and Greenhouse Gas Emission Reporting. The council will also submit an application to become a part of the Green Tier Legacy Program, a program that will help our community to grow a green bottom line and provide credible creative ways to enable our businesses to be a powerful, sustainable force for environmental good and enhance productivity, cut costs, and strengthen the health of our culture and community. The mayor's council on beautification met at the end of April and discussed future projects. The downtown baskets will be delivered and installed soon. I understand that they're, that volunteers are still being solicited to water baskets on the weekends, and you can contact my office to be connected with that project leader to volunteer for a weekend shift. The community tree sale also completed with the sale of about thirty-five trees, a number of which will be planted in our community, some in memoriam, others in honorary trees throughout the city. I had a nice visit to How School, talking about the role of the mayor a couple of weeks ago, and took about thirty-some questions from kids about, about what it's like to be mayor and run the city. I joined a few city staff to attend the annual league insurance policyholder meeting, which held many informative sessions on risks and liabilities emerging and present, both present here in cities and villages around the state, namely, in the area of protective services and responsiveness to calls, natural disasters, and the effects of an aging workforce. We left with some great insight and opportunities for our insurance provider to support us and our work. As far as the downtown property redevelopment update, we hope to finish our work with Pearl Engineering very soon on the conceptual design work of the triangle redevelopment. Again, that's going to put forth a real basic draft concept of what redevelopment may look like that includes housing and retail space. We also expect to hear very soon on our grant submission, but we were told just recently that the state is a few weeks behind in their grant award process, so that has delayed us. I know that affects our close date on one of the properties that we've acquired, so more on that soon. On aquatics research, we'll be sharing the aquatic study, study with all of you this week. In it, as a reminder to the public, we asked if people were willing to pay via increased taxes for a new public pool. We also asked opinions about indoor versus outdoor and location preferences, and we hope that this will provide yet more feedback for us as we consider what we do with our aquatic situation. Further, proposals were due Friday with, last Friday, with conceptual outdoor aquatic design services. We'll begin reviewing those this week with interviews, possible interviews and selection to follow. We hope to have a conceptual design for an outdoor facility by late June. Little bit of an airport update. Sand Valley remains a focus of our airport manager and the airport commission, which I see a commissioner in the audience. Joe, nice to see you here. Thanks for coming, supports your boy. Some traffic has occurred recently that stemmed from Sand Valley out at the airport. Tonight was an open house at the town of Rome, and I think more tour opportunities will be available for the council members who are unable to attend today. Furkey, you were able to attend? Great. So I think another alderpersons will be invited in the future for other opportunities as they become available. We are also discussing how to invite participation to the commission with Rome and the village of Beeren. Issued one proclamation related to Kids to Park Day. And finally, I want to congratulate those who joined me in taking their oath of office tonight. I look forward to working with each of you over the next two years. Speaking of, as you know, we have much on the docket tonight, not only tonight, but also in the coming months and years. I hope we continue down a path of progress, one that embraces what sometimes is unfamiliar territory for us and change for our community. I firmly believe a community that does this is certain to have a bright and vibrant future, one that focuses less on survival but more on thriving, and for one that chooses to stand still, which I hope we don't, with the hope that something someday will change or be different, will most certainly have a dim future. I want to thank the residents for the trust in each of us as we continue to make our city a better place for those who live and do business here and for those who wish, who we wish to attract to our community. Thank you. Item seventeen is considered approval of the final plat document for the West Side Assessor Plat number twenty-seven for the area bounded by Fifteenth Avenue to Twelfth Avenue South, Alton Street to the north, and south side of, West Side Assessor Plat number twenty-one, attachment number three in your packets. Council members, what are your wishes regarding attachment three? I'd entertain a motion on item seventeen.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Dolan. On your remote, please. And I'd entertain a second. Thank you. Second, motion by Dolan, second by Rayom. Any discussion? Seeing no request to speak, we'll move into a vote. Please cast your ballots. Motion carried, eight i's, zero nays. Item eighteen is to consider approval of the final plat document for the East Side Assessor Plat number sixty for the blocks lying between Baker Street, Washington Street, Fifteenth Street North, Sixteenth Street North, the blocks lying between Wiley Street, Franklin Street, Sixteenth Street North, Seventeenth Street North, the blocks lying between Washington Street, Franklin Street, Seventeenth Street North, and a hundred and sixty-two feet east of Eighteenth Street North, attachment number four. Entertain a motion on that item. We have a motion to approve by Rayom. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Coth. Seeing no request to speak, move into a vote. Please cast your ballots. Motion carried, eight i's, zero nays. Item nineteen, consider resolution, providing for the sale of approximately one million one hundred and twenty thousand general obligation promissory note, series twenty sixteen A, as recommended by the Finance and Property Committee on May fourth, which is resolution number five in our packets. Alderpersons, do you want to speak? Do you want to speak?
This is a, this resolution allows proceed with the sale of the promissory note issued that was outlined in the two thousand and sixteen budget. The proceeds from the sale will go to fund two thousand and sixteen street construction projects, those being Apple Street, twelfth to sixteenth, First Street North, Spring to Popular, First Street North, Apricot to Levine, and Third Avenue, West Grand Avenue to Jackson Street.
I'd entertain a motion on the resolution. We have a motion to accept by Kellogg, and a second by Rayom, if you could hit your remotes appropriately. Are there any requests to speak? Seeing no request to speak, please cast your ballots. Motion carried, eight i's, zero nays. Item twenty, review and consider a resolution amending the two thousand and sixteen budget wastewater software purchase from Finance and Property Committee meeting of May sixteenth, attachment number six. What are your wishes regarding that item?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Dolan, is there a second?
Second.
A second by Coth. Are there any requests to speak? Seeing no request to speak, please cast your ballots. Motion carried, eight i's, zero nays. Item twenty-one, review and consider a resolution amending the two thousand and sixteen budget sick leave payout from Finance and Property Committee's meeting on May sixteenth, attachment number seven. Council members, what are your wishes regarding that item? A motion to accept by Kellogg, is there a second? And a second by Furkey? Are there any requests to speak on the matter? Seeing no request to speak, please cast your ballots. Motion carried, eight i's, zero nays. Item twenty-two is consider confirmation of Mayor Brewin's appointment of Paul Shabowski as city clerk. Council members, what are your wishes regarding the appointment of city clerk?
I make a motion to appoint the city clerk position to the, for the duration of the term.
I have a motion to appoint Paul Shabowski as the city clerk effective tomorrow for the remainder of the term. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Furkey. Move into discussion. Are there any requests to speak? Alderperson Rayom, you're first.
Thank you, Your Honor. Not, I'm not voting against this, but the next item is, I think, the important one, and that's why I'm going to, I'll go along with this, but in context, see what we end up with on the next item, and that's to, well, considering for a special election for the clerk, so. But I will vote for this with the intention of having a special election.
Right. It appears that the motion is to appoint the clerk for the remainder of the regular term, which would basically, okay, which would basically, right. So we're really, they're kind of disposing of the second matter then by, by limiting the, or by defining the term in the appointment. It has to be done one way or the other, so if you want to do it that way, that's, that's fine, but then that would mean no special election until twenty, until the regular term ends in April of two thousand and eighteen.
Alderperson Stack, you are next.
There was just a point that the attorney just cleared up. Okay. That's what I thought his motion included, which it did, so, thank you.
Thank you. Alderperson Zerflu, you're next.
Just my opinion, I think we should, I would do it separate also, so, just reiterating again.
fine, but then that would mean no special election until 20, until the regular term ends in April of 2018.
Alderperson Stack, you are next.
There was just a point that the attorney just cleared up. Okay. That's what I thought his motion included, which it did, so, thank you.
Thank you. Alderperson Zerfle, you're next.
Just my opinion, I think we should, I would do it separate also, so, just reiterating
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor to appoint for the remainder of the term. Any further requests to speak? We have a motion and a second on the floor. See no further requests to speak. I would just highlight that in my memo to all of you that I find that Paul is an exceptional person and certainly an individual capable of fulfilling the duties, and I hope that you will support his nomination and his appointment. See no further requests to speak. Move into a vote. Please cast your ballots. Motion carried, five ayes, three nays. Congratulations, Paul. Look forward to working with you for the remainder of your term. Item 23 has now been disposed of. We'll move into item number 24, which is the report of the Planning Commission meeting held April 18th, which is in our packets. The Planning Commission met at 4:00 PM on April 18th, 2016, in the first-floor conference room of City Hall. Members present included myself, Joe Ickesid, Kelly Rosecrans, Shane Burkhardt, Fran Aaron, and Tim Burkhauser. Alderman Todd Furkey was excused. Others attending are on a list in the clerk's office. First item was an update and discussion on the zoning rewrite project with Civitech. The scores of the Wisconsin Rapid Self-Assessment completed by the commission at the last meeting were reviewed. Summary of the existing and proposed review authority was reviewed. Civitech is looking for feedback regarding the commission's involvement versus the council's involvement regarding conditional uses. Most commissions in the state recommend the council, recommend motion to the council. If the commission has granted the decision-making authority, an appeal process could still allow it to go to council. The commission was in favor of being able to have the decision-making authority versus making a recommendation. The concept of a zoning code matrix was reviewed. The matrix is intended to assist users in finding information within the zoning code more easily. Updates on the future land use map will need to run in parallel with Civitech's work. Future land use of zoning map conversion matrix was reviewed. A rezoning request requires consultation of the future land use map. This matrix will identify allowable rezoning districts within the categories identified on the future land use map. This matrix shows the importance of the future land use map and one-to-one correlation to the zoning districts. Adam Tagan is proposing a two-step review process for updating the future land use map. First is to create a zoning structure for developing a future land use map as part of Civitech's work, followed by applying the new structure to update the future land use map. The zoning rewrite process will continue with the plan of holding monthly special work sessions with the Planning Commission. Item two was adjournment at 4:50. There was a motion by Aaron, second by Rosecran, to adjourn, and that motion carried. The Planning Commission also met at 4:00 PM on May 2nd in the first-floor conference room of City Hall. All commission members were present except for Shane Burkhardt. A list of others attending is attached and on file in the clerk's office. Item one is approval of the reports from the March 7th and April 18th Planning Commission meetings. There was a motion by Rosecran, second by Aaron, to approve the requests, and that motion carried. Item two, maps and plats received. Item A was Happy Hippo CSM. The applicant is requesting a certified survey map approval for the creation of two parcels and the dedication of property as public road right-of-way. The subject property is located at 841 Goodnow Avenue. The CSM is being proposed to allow the split of the property for future development on the newly created East parcel. The three-foot road dedication is required by the official map. There's a motion by Burkhauser, second by Rosecrans, to approve Happy Hippo CSM, and that motion carried. Item B is QuickTrip CSM. The applicant is requesting a certified survey map approval for the combination of seven parcels into one and the dedication of property as public road right-of-way. Subject properties are generally located at 1041, 1061, 1111, and 1121, Lincoln Street and 1126th Street South. The CSM is being proposed to combine seven parcels into one for a proposed new QuickTrip location. A seven-foot road dedication of Lincoln Street is required by the official map. Approval is subject to the approval of the rezoning applications Plan 160206. There was a motion by Fran Aaron, second by Todd Furkey, to approve QuickTrip CSM, subject to the approval of Plan 160206, and the CSM being revised to include a seven-foot road dedication on Lincoln Street, and that motion carried. There are no other maps or plats received. Item three was Plan 160194, Wisconsin Dehydration and Processing. The applicant is requesting site plan approval to allow the construction of a 75-foot by 288-foot storage building and other accessory uses in the M3 Industrial Park District. The subject property is located at 2721 Industrial Street. Joe Mas, on behalf of the applicant, provided an overview of the request. The proposed development consists of a 75-by-288-foot membrane storage facility on the property. The request is tied to a desire to improve efficiencies for their product by removing excess moisture prior to processing. The applicant is in agreement with the proposed conditions of approval. There was a motion by Rosecrans and Furkey to approve the report, to approve the plan, Wisconsin dehydration and processing based on the following conditions. Number one, all new off-street parking and vehicle use areas shall be surfaced with asphalt or concrete. Prior to occupancy, the storage building and paving plan for the existing gravel area shall be submitted to and approved by city staff. Item two, the storage building and accessory uses shall be located in substantial conformance with a site plan submitted by the applicant. And item three, the compliance with all other applicable codes and ordinances, and that motion carried. Item number four was a public hearing on Plan 160206, QuickTrip Incorporated. The applicant is requesting a rezoning from the M1 Enclosed Industrial District to the B2 General Commercial District on property located 1126th Street South, and a rezoning from the R2 One Family and Two Family Residential District to the B2 General Commercial District on property located at 1041 Lincoln Street, and public hearing on Plan 160207, QuickTrip Incorporated. The applicant is requesting a conditional use within the B2 General Commercial District to allow the construction of an automobile service station and the placement of an animated sign. Subject properties are generally located at 1041, 1061, 1111, 1121 Lincoln Street, and 1126th Street South. Due to the related nature of the public hearings, the commission announced that a joint public hearing will be held for Plan 160206 and Plan 160207. Public hearing opened at 4:18 PM. Troy, on behalf of the applicant, provided an overview of the proposed QuickTrip development. The proposed development consists of an approximately 10,000-square-foot building which will house an automobile service station and car wash. Also on site will be gas canopy signage and green space. Speaking in favor of the request were Troy Malevza via, I butchered that, I apologize, 1621 Oak Street Lacrosse, Wisconsin Mike Zerfle 1111 Lincoln Street, Marlene Turbin Weldon 541 Airport Avenue, Kent Weldon 541 Airport Avenue. Speaking in opposition to the request were James Gordon 620 Dewey, Louis Steinheber 540 Dewey, Larry Jorgensen 641 Dewey, Cheryl Verlust 510 Dewey, Lisa West 1040 Lincoln, Cindy Schlichting 610 Dewey, Ben Machesny at 478 Dewey Street, and David Brosser 611 Dewey Street, Tina Zabel 476 Dewey Street, and Pat Niyens 1001 Lincoln Street. Public hearing was closed at 5:45 PM. Item five was action on Plan 160206, QuickTrip Incorporated rezoning from M1 to B2 on parcel 3407914. There was a motion by Furkey, second by Aaron, to approve and approve that rezoning, and that motion carried. Item six was action on Plan 160206, QuickTrip Incorporated rezoning from R2B2 to B2 on commercial, on parcel 3407922. There was a motion by Rosecran, second by Burkhauser, to approve that plan rezoning from R2 to B2, and that motion carried. Item seven was action on Plan 160207, QuickTrip Incorporated, conditional use to allow an automobile service station and animated sign on parcels 3407922, 07921, 07920, 07919, 07916, and 07914. Commission discussed the input gathered during the public hearing, concerns and questions regarding the requested automobile service station and animated sign included, traffic flow and safety, overnight parking, Lincoln and Expressway intersection, truck traffic, Sixth Street access point, fencing and screening on the north property line, lighting, outdoor music and advertisements, headlights into neighboring properties, noise from the car wash, future public improvements, landscaping on East property line, litter, effect on property values, lack of a need for another automobile service station, and that, and that the development is a 24-by-7 operation. The commission discussed additional conditions, of which were included. Revision to the landscaping plan. Extend a minimum 10-foot evergreen trees entire length or north property line where adjacent to vehicle use areas. Install the berm and landscaping on open space along Sixth Street as screening. Install street trees along Lincoln and Sixth Street South and require a mixture of species. Limitations on the hours of operation for the car wash. Limitations on the use of outdoor speakers for music advertising and paging. Restricting overnight parking. Additional signage on pavement markings for the right-in access point. Reductions in total height of the freestanding sign. Need for engineering to review Dewey and Sixth Street intersection. There's been a motion, a motion by Rosecran, second by Furkey, to approve Plan 160207, QuickTrip Incorporated, subject to the following conditions. Only the land use categories of automobile service station, car wash, and animated sign with accessory uses are permitted on the subject properties. The subject properties shall be developed in substantial conformance with the concept plans submitted by the applicant. Number three, the site and landscaping plan shall be updated to allow sufficient room for rear access to 520, 530, 540, and 550 Dewey Street. A new site obscuring privacy fence shall be installed on the north property line where one does not exist, and existing fencing shall be replaced where requested by the neighboring properties. Side fence shall be between six and eight foot in height and shall be constructed of wood or vinyl. Access for the subject properties off of Sixth Street South shall be limited to one curb cut on the south side of the property to minimize headlight impact in residential properties. Number six, after reviewing, after review of the submitted traffic impact analysis, TIA, further analysis of traffic impacts created by the development shall be completed as follows. Breakout volumes by movement in Table 1-1. Provide level of service and volumes at 10-plus years. Provide full consideration of hospital expansion and anticipated patient volume. City staff is working, is willing to assist if needed in order to get numbers that directly relate to the local situation. Pass-by trips are very high. Use 25% pass-by trip, pass-by rate unless further justification can be given. Review consistency of the model with actual operations. The model does not seem to accurately reflect actual operations during peak hours since southbound left turn lanes can sit through a cycle during the peak hour. Vistro is not WISDOT-approved. TIA guidance requires approved software. Accident history needs to be reviewed and included in analysis. Current geometric issues such as negative offsets of opposing turn lanes need to be analyzed. Once complete, the city with joint review by WISDOT will review the proposed changes to the TIA and will determine if modifications are necessary to adequately handle proposed traffic. Sidewalks shall be installed on the west side of Sixth Street during project development. Item eight, the photometric plan shall be revised to show more than half-foot candle, candles along the north property lines of the subject properties, specifically pole number three. The animated sign faces shall not exceed 30 square feet in total area. Future maintenance and/or replacement of the sign in the same configuration and size shall not require additional approvals. Item 10, the animated signs shall not contain flashing or animated messages. In particular, the signs shall not mimic lights on public safety vehicles. Messages shall not change more than once every five seconds. Item 11, the animated signs shall, shall have either an automatic or manual dimming feature that, and that feature shall be enabled. Condition 12, the freestanding signs shall be redesigned to feature a monument-style base with materials to match the building. Total height of the freestanding signs shall not exceed 21 feet. Condition 13, the landscape plan shall be revised to show evergreen plantings a minimum of 10 feet in height at an installation of a minimum of two species along the north property line where the adjacent, where adjacent to paved areas. A minimum of three-foot in height landscape berm with the open space area fronting Sixth Street South intended to screen vehicle headlights and lighting. Street trees, a minimum of two species along Lincoln Street and Sixth Street where conflicts with utilities do not exist. Condition 14, the car wash shall be limited to hours of operation between 6:00 AM and 10:00 PM. Condition 15, the outdoor speakers and public announcement systems shall be utilized for emergency paging only. No outdoor music shall be allowed. Condition 16, overnight parking shall not be allowed on site. Condition 17, the not-and-exit sign shall be illuminated and feasibility of additional pavement marking shall be investigated. Condition 18, compliance with all other applicable codes and ordinances, and that motion carried. Item eight is adjournment. Motion by Furkey, second by Burkhardt, to adjourn that meeting at 6:23 PM, and that motion carried. With that, item 24, the report of the Planning Commission meetings held April 18th and May 2nd. Councilmembers, what are your wishes regarding those two reports? Alderperson Kellogg, you've got a request to speak.
I would like items five, six, seven, and eight to be withheld for discussion.
Should we move to approve the Planning Commission report with the exception of five, six, seven, and eight?
Right.
We have a motion to approve by Kellogg with the balance, for the balance of the report with the exception of five, six, seven, and eight. Is there a second? We'll have a second by Stack. Kellogg could, perfect, thank you, you're on it. And Stack, if you could. Request to speak. I don't see any. Alderperson Raume, you're first. Can you hit your microphone, Tom?
You bet. I guess just, he had five, six, seven, and eight. I'm just questioning that two, two B maybe, two should be in there, Scott.
Two B?
That's what.
All right, this with.
We talked about that there would be no friendly amendments. The motion and a second is on the floor for five, six, seven, and eight. Two B is a CSM. I will not offer a friend, I will not accept the friendly.
Right. And actually, for CSMs, planning has the final approval on those. That's just kind of for informational. So the, the map has already been approved, and I believe it was contingent upon the rezoning and all that, so that won't occur unless the other ones occur.
Thanks for clarification. Any further requests to speak on the balance of the report? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays. That leaves us with five, six, seven, and eight. With that, I'd entertain a motion or request to speak, I suppose.
I would like to allow anybody in the audience that would like to speak to these items.
Okay, we've got an invitation to address the body on five, six, seven, and eight. I would remind the council, however, that the public hearing was held. We're not rehaving a public hearing at this time. However, we certainly allow individuals to address the body.
Yeah, but at the hearing, not all alderpersons were there, so if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this topic, please do so.
Please raise your hand if you'd like to speak on five, six, seven, and eight. Cindy, we'll take him from the front right and we'll move back into the left. How does that sound? All right. If you come to the podium, introduce yourself, state your address, and you'll be allowed five minutes to speak. Make sure the microphone is on. No. Try again.
Okay. I'm Cindy Schlichting. I live at 610 Dewey. We bought our home in November. We moved here then. We bought it because it was a nice, quiet, safe area. Now, I don't have pros or cons personally about the development. I guess I do, but I'm not sure if I'm pro or con. One minute I'm pro, the next minute I'm con. So I guess I just want to make sure that you look at some things from the citizen's point of view as well as the alderperson part of you. I know that growth is good. I know it's good for the city, the tax base could use it, but I'm not sure if it's good for the residents or for the neighborhood that we live in. And I know people say we could get something worse, and you're right, we could, but we could also get something better. So once again, there's a pro and there's a con. I just would like to see some more tests on the traffic flows, the sound, and how it's going to affect us. I really think that safety and the quality of our home life is something that I would hope that you would also be looking at as well as what's good for the city. I know that people are concerned about property values. Yeah, I'm concerned about that, too, but I'm mainly concerned about how this is going to affect our home lives and our neighborhood. So I guess in a nutshell, what I'm asking you to do when you think about your vote or when you do your vote for this project, will you put yourselves in our position, pretend this is in your backyard, and vote that way? Not only what's good for the city, but if you lived at 610 Dewey, would you want this project to go through? That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Gentlemen, behind, all right.
Thank you. My name is Hugh Machesney. I'm here speaking on behalf of my son Benjamin Machesney, who's a resident at 478 Dewey. He could not be present tonight, and just his concerns about noise, lighting, privacy. He mentioned something, the possibility that security cameras may be installed on that property, which could be pointed at the properties adjacent to the proposed QuickTrip, and he's concerned about that. I am also a resident of the city, and as a resident of the city, I'm concerned, I was at Planning Commission meeting, and I'm concerned that there was very little real serious discussion about the impact of traffic at those intersections. It was mentioned at the meeting that the intersection of Lincoln Street and Riverview Expressway is already a problem intersection in the city. It will not improve with this. Also, I think plans for the intersection of Dewey Street where it, where it goes to the hospital with the entrance and exit across from it, there are going to be a lot of people making left turns, and all four left turns there, in and out, in and out. The hospital road may become busier just because of hospital plans. That's a problem. And the other section on Sixth Street, people already use that. And the other section on Sixth Street, people already use that as a cut-through in the neighborhood. With the attraction of QuickTrip, it's going to be a lot more of that kind of traffic in that residential neighborhood that my son lives in, and he's concerned about that. And so, um, my only, the last point is, a lot of locally-owned businesses, this is going to be in direct competition with locally-owned businesses, and there may be jobs gained at, by QuickTrip, but there may be jobs lost as well in our community. I wish all of you alderpeople would consider that seriously, what the impact of this would be on traffic and safety in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mike, I think you're next, as I move from right to left.
My name's Mike Zurfluh. I'm here to speak in favor of the proposed QuickTrip. I certainly feel for the neighbors that live around there. However, the majority of that property is already zoned commercial, and it's my understanding, Mr. Teagan can maybe comment, or Mayor Verwin can maybe comment, but if this was, uh, wasn't a gas station, we wouldn't even need to go. It would just be a building permit. Is that, is that correct?
There are listed uses within the B2 district that would be outright permitted.
So for example, if it was a 24-hour restaurant or something like that, I don't believe it would even need to go in front of the council. That being said, I've been, uh, involved in development for over 30-plus years, and I can tell you I've never worked with a company that is as great to work with as QuickTrip. I think they've addressed, uh, pretty much everybody's concern, and I do think they will be a great neighbor to the neighbors around there. Obviously, that land is, is destined for commercial development, whatever that's going to be, and I do think, uh, as far as, if I was a neighbor knowing that it's going to be commercial, I certainly think, certainly think, uh, QuickTrip will be a asset rather than what other potential businesses could go there. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the body? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Dawn Schmutzer. I live at 404 Wood Avenue. I live close to that intersection. Uh, my children walk to and from school through that intersection. The safety of that intersection is in question already. There are no crossing guards. The children either ride their bikes, ride their skateboards, cut across the street. There is no safety for the children. If you're going to put in a gas station 24 hours, the kids aren't going to have a safe way to cross that street either. Even if, with traffic coming in and out of that gas station, it would just be too much. It's already congested at that intersection. The intersection is not safe. Another idea, just happened to come over me this weekend, if you're need, if we, if this city really truly needs another QuickTrip, why not put it up by Home Depot? There's turn lanes there, there's stop-and-go lights, there's area open there. I'm concerned about the noise, the safety, the privacy of the, the people that live there. It's just not a very good fit for that intersection. There's, if we needed, if we truly need another QuickTrip, there's got to be a better location. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the body? Yes. Troy, you want to come up?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Troy Maleseva, real estate manager with QuickTrip, 1626 Oak Street, La Crosse, Wisconsin. Thank you for the time this evening. Uh, our proposal would be to expand our business, uh, in the city of Wisconsin Repids. This would be a location that we've kind of got properties on different ends of town. This would give us the opportunity to be of service kind of in the center of the city. Going through the, the process here has been, uh, a good process from our perspective. It gives us a chance to focus on what some of the concerns might be in the neighborhood because we see this as an opportunity not only to be of service to the greater community, but also to potentially be an asset for those in the neighborhood. Place to walk, to grab a cup of coffee, place to gather, have a sandwich, read the newspaper. Uh, with that, the discussion of the plant commission, you'll see a list, I think it was somewhere north of 18 different, uh, conditions of approval, and a lot of those were good compromises made at that meeting led by staff, led by members of the plant commission. And I believe, Adam, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the approval at the end of the night was unanimous, correct? With that, I'd submit that, uh, we'd be looking to be good neighbors. With that, one of the items requested was the traffic situation. Uh, there's a traffic study that was requested, uh, and a first draft has been completed. There's several comments that were made by engineering staff at the city level, uh, looking for additional information in that traffic study. Uh, our consultant is looking at that because in our interest as well, it's got to be a safe situation because folks coming, uh, to and from our store need to be able to access it safely as well. So we're aligned in terms of looking for a safe, uh, facility that would be an asset to the city. Uh, with that, I ask for your support this evening. Thank you.
Are there any questions, council members, for Troy while he's at the podium? Alderperson Stack, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, in the discussions that you had with the city and planning for this activity that you'd like to do, was any discussion had concerning a specific right turn lane off of the expressway and a right turn lane off of Lincoln into your property? The reason I ask that is because, as others have said, uh, traffic is a problem a couple times a day there at that intersection. Other times, you wouldn't know there was an intersection. I would be concerned with, uh, people getting caught mid, mid-crossing, mid-intersection, but if there was a unique right turn lane off of the expressway and a unique right turn lane into your property, that allows the westbound on the expressway or northbound on Lincoln to proceed without impacting those two travels, the west and north. So did you in your, in your planning, consider a unique, uh, right turn lane off the expressway and a unique right turn lane off of Lincoln?
Yeah, I think I'd also defer to staff on that as well, but I think there has been some discussion about a possible right turn lane off of, off of the parkway.
Adam, do you want to address, or Joe, either, I mean, both of you have a comments to make on the traffic questions that are, have been raised and will be raised, maybe by members.
I can certainly start, and then I would obviously defer to the public works director. Uh, but that is why the traffic impact analysis is being done, to see if that is called for by traffic. I would note that there is a dedicated right-in-only, that would be, uh, to enter QuickTrip if you are going north on Lincoln, so that is part of their proposed layout already. Um, and that would only allow the right-in movement, so there would be no holes up there for people, uh, taking that movement. Uh, the right-in, uh, dedicated lane moving west on the expressway as well as a potential left-turn, uh, movement if you're headed south on Lincoln. Uh, those are two alternatives that if the traffic calls for it, would likely be recommended by that traffic study. Uh, but until the final items are, um, entered into that study as requested by engineering at this time, it's hard to say if the warrants are there at this time.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Joe, did you have anything to add to that?
Sure.
Jim, are you satisfied with the?
I was just going to add that there are, uh, eight items in that traffic impact analysis that, uh, that we're calling back for review, and, um, once QuickTrip supplies that information, the engineering staff will reevaluate. It's obviously of, of, uh, the safety of that intersection is of great interest to the, to the city, and, um, with, uh, potential of a new business at that location, it wouldn't be in anyone's interest to have to address safety and traffic issues two or three years down the road after the business exists because that's where traffic's going to be accessing that business. So, um, so staff certainly wants to make sure that, that access is safe and efficient right from the get-go, um, for everybody's sake.
Alderpersons, any further questions? Kellogg?
With all the, I, first of all, I want to compliment you, uh, on responding to the concerns that the residents had with regard to a fence and shrubbery and so forth. And the plot looks quite nice, but when, when you consider all of these, have you thought, I mean, here you proposed a design, and then we raise all these questions, or the residents did. What about going back and looking at the design? For example, um, the QuickTrip on the west side of town, I don't think has a car wash. This one you're proposing to have a car wash. You have it adjacent to the QuickTrip, uh, maybe it should be separate like it is on the south QuickTrip and, uh, toward Plover, and maybe that should be near the expressway because that was a concern of the noise. Um, maybe, uh, the design of the QuickTrip should be parallel, the front should be parallel with, uh, Lincoln, I mean, the expressway. And so therefore, the parking would, and move it back, so the parking would be in front of the building more so, and you could have someone still look at the gasoline stalls from that entrance of the corner because that might be a concern for you. But then you wouldn't have the people parking, and you, you know, and I know, when you park your car, you, you push the button to lock your car, you get the beeps, you know, and it's 24/7 for these people living there. So why can't that traffic be more toward the expressway? So, I mean, what, what we did is, we, we have a design, and I like to suggest that I'm going to vote this down, but I like to, I, I, I'm not, not in favor of a QuickTrip. I just think that I'd like to have someone go back and revisit that design that you have based on the input, um, that the community made. And so, um, and I'll be stating that later. The other thing, um, in one of the conditions, for example, it said a three-to-eight-foot fence, uh, why don't we say eight-foot fence? Because one of the comments that Ben Machesney said, a six-foot fence really wouldn't make any difference, so, um, so let's just put down eight. And then I had one concern, Lisa West that lives on 1040 Lincoln. She had a concern because the exit, basically the single exit, I know you have two exits. There's one on the west, but you're not going to have many people leaving that way, and you're going to have the majority of them leaving right across from Dewey, and her house is on Lincoln quarter from that, and she says she's going to get all the lights and all the, uh, traffic. Um, and I know it's not adjacent here, but you stated at that meeting that you're a good neighbor, and I think, and that this is just my editorial, that a good neighbor would also work with that resident to see what you can do for landscaping with that particular house. Um, but basically, I have a few more comments about traffic, and, and that's basically in general that I want to make, but as it pertains to you with this plot and your design, it's something that I think could be reconsidered, and I'm not into this. I don't know, but I think looking at this and the logic that I see, um, it just doesn't make sense to me. And then the other thing, I've gone to the other QuickTrips. I figured you're going to have at your rush hours, 65 to 70 people coming in and out of that QuickTrip. You, you didn't give us that, uh, information, but I went to the west QuickTrip, and they gave me the daily rate, and then I figured it out by hour, then I figured it out by what I thought would be the rush hour and so forth. That'd be 65 to 70 people leaving or entering, but they're also leaving. That's a lot of traffic, and I would say 40% will come from Lincoln on that one curve, and 45% will come from Dewey, and maybe 15 will be coming from the back, and 15 will probably go in the back. That means 85% of all that traffic will be leaving across from that intersection of Dewey, and by the same time that, that Riverview Hospital, well, their people will be leaving four to, between four and six. That's going to be a major congestion there. Now, I don't know, I didn't see the big picture. I didn't see the city saying, well, maybe on, um, for example, Hill, Hill Street, for example, it would be, uh, what street they are, are they? Well, Hill, where they, let's say by the hospital when people leave, maybe requiring that they make a left turn, and then they have to go up, uh, a lot in front of Assumption to get up to Eighth Street. That would bypass that intersection, but I didn't see that at the hearing, the big picture. I also see a letter from the engineer stating that it states, and it, I, I won't say, I won't read that paragraph, but it states that, uh, they don't have a, a traffic impact provided by QuickTrip, is missing and so forth. But then the last paragraph disturbs me. Says, "Once an additional information is received from QuickTrip, we will determine if any modifications are necessary. If modifications are needed, the city would like to enter into negotiations with QuickTrip." I don't know why we should be entering negotiations. We should figure out how much it costs to the taxpayer. Why should I, as a taxpayer, pay for those changes? Now, there might be some cost to the taxpayer, but I think the majority of that should be QuickTrip's cost because we wouldn't be making those changes if it wasn't for QuickTrip. And so maybe you should know, but the, rather than negotiations, I think we should tell you what we think you should be paying, and then you have to decide, do you want to add that to the cost of putting a QuickTrip there or not? You may have to, maybe it is. Maybe it's a very profitable location, and that's fine with you, or maybe you have to negotiate with the realtors that are selling you the property. That's your problem. But I think our problem is, we have to tell you what we think you should pay, and you should know that upfront before you buy that parcel. Um, and those are the concerns I have. That's why I'm turning this down because, in my, when the motion comes and all that, because I think it has to go back for review. But I do like the concept of a QuickTrip, but I think there's a lot of landmines there that have to be considered.
Troy, do you have anything, um, to respond to, specific to the?
You know, I guess, I would appreciate your comments. I guess I would just say that, obviously, the, the, uh, the plans that go through the initial plant commission review aren't the final construction set of documents. Obviously, going through the traffic study and having, uh, requests for more information, I guess I would say is fairly typical. It's not, not that they get those perfect right out of the chute, and there's always a little bit of more information that's needed. So I, I guess I would just step back and say, obviously, we're in alignment that we would like to have, uh, the intersection safe for all, not just for QuickTrip, not just for what's existing there, not just for the hospital, but to make it work for everybody. So we're, we're definitely aligned in that, in that regard. As far as the particulars of the site, um, as you go through the process, there's always things that maybe never, never got thought of initially, and I think going through this process, we, we came up with some good solutions to different items. Um, as far as being good neighbors with landscaping along, along the fence and that type of thing, I think this site has somewhere north of 40% green space, which as far as commercial isn't, I don't know what the typical requirement is, if it's 20%, 25%?
Within the B2 district, the city has no minimum landscape requirement, so conceivably it could be 100% hard surface.
Yeah, so with this lot, we tried to be sensitive to that and provide, uh, instead of a full maximum build-out. We're not providing any side diesel like we have at other locations in the city. Uh, we do have a car wash, but what we tried to do was put that kind of, uh, center to the site and face the, the exit of the car wash closest to the expressway. So we did put some thought into how we laid things out, and, uh, I, I appreciate that maybe, uh, we can't make it 100% perfect for everybody, but we would do our part to make sure we're good neighbors in terms of providing, uh, uh, you know, we limited the hours of the car wash at night, providing that fencing, things like that, so, um, we see as an opportunity to be, be a good neighbor and type to those types of things.
Okay, well, Troy's still at the podium. Is there any, any other aldermen that's got questions for, for him? Did you have some? No? Okay. All right. Thank you for coming to the podium, addressing those concerns, um, reminding the aldermen we do not have a motion on the floor, so the floor is open for a motion.
I'll make a motion. I'd like to send this report back to the planning commission and, and, and look at all aspects of what the residents have said now, and, and maybe look at the redesigning of that location, looking at, I, I know, for example, the west, um, QuickTrip has three entrances and exits. The, the south side has four exits, excesses and entrances. The toward Plover has two, but there's no cross-street like Dewey, and this has one entrance coming in from the north side and basically one from Dewey and one exit. Now, you, there is an exit at the west side, but, uh, you won't get much traffic out of there. So I think that whole design has to be reviewed, and again, I want to echo, I'm not against the concept of a QuickTrip, but I think the planning commission, what's one month? What, what's one month looking at all these factors and, and reviewing them, uh, with, and getting more information about the traffic? You don't have that yet, and then reviewing it, and then possibly coming back to the common council next month. But I would just as soon, um, recommend that it, my motion is to send it back to the planning commission.
Okay, we've got, we've got a motion on the floor to refer the item back to the planning commission, so in effect, holding the item over for further planning commission discussion. discussion, review. Is there a second on that motion? Is there a second on that motion? Signos? We got a second by Alderperson Rayom, motion by Kellogg, second by Rayom. We'll now move into discussion. We've got Alderperson Furkey, Tom, if you'd hit your second button, and then I'll do a request to speak. I see there's an individual in the audience that wants to speak, but I'll have an Alderman defer their time, Mike, so, one minute, please. Okay, very good. Are there requests to speak, or anyone wishing to yield their time to Mr. Zerflu?
I'll yield time.
The Zerflu, one of the three in the room, I guess I should say.
I'll yield time to.
Alderperson Coth wants to yield his time, Mike, if you want to come to the front. They're not related, I don't think, the Zerflus aren't, but they're all in the room. Nobody caught that.
Thank you, I just wanted to make a brief comment on the traffic. I don't believe QuickTrip's going to cause a huge increase in traffic on that overall intersection. Yes, there will be people turning down Lincoln Street, but it's a convenience store. I was in Wausau today, and I ended up stopping at a QuickTrip to get gas, but it wasn't like I went out of my way, there was a QuickTrip. So while I do believe there may be some increase in traffic going on Lincoln Street, I don't believe there's going to be people just going out of their way to go to QuickTrip on that location. And I know, talking to Mr. Teagan and Mr. Terry, that the traffic study, that's part of the conditional use permit, I believe, on how that'll be handled. So thank you for taking, listening to me again.
Thank you. Are there any further requests to speak? We've got an Alderman out of the room, I'm going to stall maybe a moment longer, so we, I'm sorry, we can mark a map, so Alderperson Rayom?
Thank you. I seconded the, I think that's probably the best we can come up with tonight, but the neighbors there don't want it. I'd rather see a motion, I guess, to deny it, but to send it back and see what comes up, and I guess see what the neighbors say. But I do have a concern about safety there, a very big concern. QuickTrip will get a lot of business there. It's a lot of cars turning off that expressway, going either direction, west or east. You're going to have a lineup of cars on the south side of the expressway that won't even fit in the turn lane, probably, and it's a hard one to cross, to turn at anyway, to turn left as you're going east. In a busy times, rush time, and hour and that, you might as well just keep going straight. But you're, if they aren't going to get the business, that there's going to be an increase in traffic, I can't believe they're going to put it there. That'd be stupid. They're putting it there to get vehicles in there. And I haven't heard from one neighbor that they want it. I've heard from a few, and they don't want it. This, the driveway going out the back there, cars are going to be sneaking through to get back to Eighth Street, or circle around, back to Lincoln that way, and whoever said, from the audience, about vehicles sneaking through there now, they do. I've seen them. I've driven by this since this proposal came out several times, so I was one that was driving there, but I wasn't sneaking through. I did get out and walk around, I looked at it. I don't think the site is a fit for the QuickTrip there. I understand why they want to put it there, it's in the center of the town, I totally understand it. You'll have them here, here, and in the middle. But safety, people walking, the kids in the school, during the school year, is a very, very big, very big concern of mine. How far is that driveway from the expressway, that first driveway there? How far is that from, how many feet is that?
Sorry, I don't have a scale on me, and it's not a measurement that's specifically called out on the site plan, but using a guesstimate, I would say around 100 feet.
Okay. On the map, it doesn't look like that, and I, on the drawings I got, didn't see it, I couldn't make it out anyway. I'm not in that, I don't have that job. The reason I ask with that is that I think there's going to be that increase in traffic, I agree with Scott with that, and that, that's a concern there, is, you know, you're going to have a backup, possibly, people turning in, crossing the highway, turning left as they go east, or as they go on west to try to turn in there. You know, I'll stop here, but I just don't think this is the, what should go in there. There is, I mean, it could handle something in that spot, but the traffic coming and going, Scott was right with that, they don't stay there, so it's in and out. So for every one, there's two, because they're leaving. And the back way out, the neighbors there, but if we send it back, maybe something will come up that they would agree with. I would rather have seen it defeated, but I made, I seconded the motion to send it back to Planning.
Alderperson Kellogg, you're next to speak.
Just for curiosity, I came up with the estimate about 70, 65 or 70 cars coming in, and remember, they're coming in and going, so it's 140, whatever. But I went to the QuickTrip on the west side of town, and I know the person that works there and understands, is in the administration type of thing, told me there's 1,000 cars, or customers, may not all be cars, customers that visit that west side. So if you divide, I divided it by 24 hours, and then you have your downtime between 11 at night, between 11 at night and 5:00 in the morning, you don't have so many cars. And then you've got to think of your peak time, it's close to 50, 65 or 70. Now, that's just my guesstimate, but that's a lot of cars, and 85% of those are going to be exiting at that Dewey exit, and you're going to have expansion at Riverview, possibly in the future, and you're going to have all those cars at the same time, between four and six, going home. That's going to be a mess. And then not only, they're not going to all make right turns from the hospital on Lincoln, they'll want to cross. So you're going to have cars making, trying to make a left turn to go to the expressway, and some cross, some trying to cross into the QuickTrip. I mean, you don't have, it's just common sense, and I think it's ludicrous to even think that we should pass it without some further review of the big picture of all the streets in that area.
So you know further requests to speak? We've got a motion on the floor to hold this item over, and send it back to the Planning Commission for further discussion. So you know further requests to speak? We'll move into a vote. Please cast your ballots. The motion to appro, too late, Tom, just kidding. Motion carried, six ayes, two nays. We'll move into item number 25. Standing Common Council Committee Reports, item A, Finance Property Committee Meeting Held May 3, and 16. Alderperson Dolan, floor is yours.
Thank you, Your Honor, City Council, City Staff, those who are present and those at home. Finance and Property Committee met at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, May 3, 2016, in the council chambers of City Hall. All members were present. Also attending were Alderperson Furkey, Alderperson Kellogg, Alderperson Rayom, Mayor Verwink, Tim DeSorcy, and Sue Schill. A list of others in attendance is on file in the Clerk's office. Just a note of order, we are going to hold out items 8, 9, and 12 for separate discussion, motions, and voting, and item 13 already has been approved tonight, earlier tonight. Item 1, the meeting was called to order, as I said. Item 2, consider a special events application filed by Eric Daven on behalf of the Special Olympics of Wisconsin for a Run With The Cops event on October 6, 2016, to include Para A, street closures from 12:00 PM to 9:00 PM, Goggan Street from First Avenue South to Third Avenue South, First Avenue South from West Grand Avenue to Third Avenue South, use of a walk bike path, police vehicle display on First Avenue South. There was, there was a motion and a second to approve the special events application of the Special Olympics of Wisconsin for the Run With The Cops event on October 6, 2016, the motion carried. Item 3, consider a special events application filed by John Fanta on behalf of the Wisconsin Rafters for a Race Across the Wisconsin event on August 6, 2016, to include Para A, soft closure or police assistance at the intersection of Third Street South and Birch Street, Para B, rafting race across the river. There was a motion and a second to approve the special events application of Wisconsin Rapids Rafters for the Race Across the Wisconsin event on August 6, 2016, motion carried. Item 4, consider a special events application filed by Jenna Moran and Tammy Slusky on behalf of Encouraged Community Foundation Incorporated for a Community Picnic on August 3, 2016, from 4:30 PM to 8:00 PM, to include the following, Para A, street closures from 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM, First Avenue South from West Grand Avenue to Third Avenue South, Johnson Street between First Avenue South and Third Avenue South, West Grand Avenue from Second Street North to Second Avenue, including the Grand Avenue Bridge, Third Avenue South from West Grand Avenue South to Chase Street, Goggan Street between First Avenue South and Third Avenue South. Para B, use of the Centralia Parking Lot for event parking, Para C, suspension of the open container ordinance in the area bounded by Third Avenue South to Goggan Street, north along the West Riverbank to West Grand Avenue from 4:30 PM to 8:00 PM. Para D, use of the power box, Para E, vending, Para F, temporary Class B, Class P alcohol license application, use of amplification speakers and a noise ordinance variance for live music, and a petting zoo. There is a motion and a second to approve the special events application from the Encouraged Community Foundation for the Community Picnic on August 3, 2016, motion carried. Item 5, request from Tom Prangie on behalf of the Central Wisconsin BMX to host a fireworks display during a BMX event in July at the city-owned BMX facility. There was a motion and a second to approve the request to host a fireworks display during a BMX event in July at the city-owned BMX facility, the motion carried. Item 6, review and consider a five-year uniform and facility services contract, there was a motion and a second to award the five-year uniform facility service contract to the low bid from UniFirst, motion carried. Item 7, request permission to apply for a Legacy Foundation grant to fund an additional hybrid narcotics detective position, there was a motion and a second to grant permission to apply for a Legacy Foundation grant to fund an additional hybrid narcotics detective position, motion carried. Item 10, request permission to apply for a CDBG public facilities grant for downtown development, redevelopment, there was a motion and a second to grant permission to apply for a $500,000 CDBG public facilities grant for downtown redevelopment, motion carried. Item 11, consider the sale of an excess remnant of city property located at the northeast corner of Riverview Expressway and Lincoln Street to QuickTrip Inc., to be contingent upon QuickTrip Inc. obtaining all necessary approvals and permits, including a conditional use permit for their proposed development. There was a motion and a second to approve the sale of excess remnant of city property located at the northeast corner of Riverview Expressway and Lincoln Street to QuickTrip Inc. for $20,282, contingent upon QuickTrip Inc. obtaining all necessary approvals and permits, including a conditional use permit for their proposed development, motion carried. Item 13 was already voted on tonight. Item 14, beverage operator license application, there was a motion and a second to approve the beverage operator license, motion carried. Item 15, begin review of the 2015-2016 liquor, beer, wine license application, the review began, no action was taken. Item 16, audit of the bills, there was a motion and a second to approve check number 63254 to 63603, motion carried. Item 17 was adjournment, there was a motion and a second to adjourn, the meeting adjourned at 7:15 PM. Terry Dolan, Chairperson Greg Heff, Secretary, and with that, I will move to have those items placed and do a vote.
The motion was to approve item?
Holding out 8, 9, and 12.
Thank you. We've got a motion to approve the Finance Property Committee reports for May 3 and May 16, holding out.
Wait, I'm sorry, I do have May 16 yet.
Oh, all right.
So on May 16, Finance Property Committee met at 5:00 PM in the first floor conference room at City Hall. All members were present except for Alderperson Heff, who was excused. Also attending were Alderperson Stack, Alderperson Rayom, Alderperson Kellogg, Mayor Verwink, Joe Terry, Paul Baller, Jim Forsky, Tim DeSorcy, and the media. Item 1, as I said, called to order. Item 2, review and consider approval of proposals to replace the recycling truck with a single-stream automated recycling truck, as approved by the Public Works Committee and City Council. There was a motion and a second to purchase a Peterbilt 320 low cab overdesigned truck from JX Truck Center for $245,573, price includes a $6,000 trade-in allowance, the motion carried. Item 3, review and consider approving the purchase of up to 6,500 recycling carts under the National Intergovernmental Cooperative Purchasing Agreement Program. There was a motion and a second to approve purchasing 6,500 recycling carts under the National Intergovernmental Cooperative Purchasing Agreement Program from Toder for $343,010, motion carried. Item 4 and 5 were already voted on tonight, with that, we adjourned, there was an adjournment at 5:27 PM. Terry Dolan, Chairperson, and Tim DeSorcy, Acting Secretary. With that, I'll move to approve both reports, holding out items 8, 9, and 12 on the first report.
Is there a second? Second already. Second by Furkey. Motion by Dolan, second by Furkey, move into discussion. Alderperson Rayom, you're first to speak.
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I would, if I can, hold out 11.
The motion was already made to approve the balance of the reports, with the exception of 8, 9, and 12, so.
Was the vote taken?
We're in discussion on the reports, minus 8, 9, and 12.
Well, he held those out, I got a right to hold one out myself.
He made a motion to approve the reports.
To hold items out, you don't have to make a?
We made a motion, there was a motion and a second on the reports.
With the exception of those three.
Correct.
Discussion is, I want to hold out item 11.
Anyone else?
I think I have the right to do that. I don't need a motion for that. And maybe, I'm sorry, I guess if I don't get to do it, it's a no vote all the way, on other of those three.
Okay.
And that has to do with QuickTrip for those in the audience.
Okay. Right, that's the sale of the excess remnant property, which would be contingent on the, on the other approvals. The motion now belongs to the bodies of the body, wishes to vote, I'll vote in, to amend the motion on the floor, that can be done, otherwise.
I entertain a motion to amend the motion that's been made. Is there a motion to amend the motion? We have a motion to amend the motion to remove item number 11, I presume? Hold out item number 11, to amend the motion to include 11? Is there a second? We have a second to include item 11. We'll move into a vote on amending the original motion, which was to approve the report and include item number 11, as held out. Paul, are we ready to vote? The motion was to amend the motion, right? So we've got a? Right. So please cast your ballots if you're ready to vote, I don't see anybody else requesting to speak. So an aye vote would include that. Motion carried, six ayes, two nays. Move to the balance of the report. Any further discussion, reports, thank you. Are there any further discussion on the reports, with the exception of 8, 9, 11, and 12? Alderperson Dolan.
Just a comment, because it wasn't really specific in there. So for the recycling that we're, you know, talking about tonight, there are going to be two different sized containers, so, you know, everybody's been calling on that, so there are going to be two different choices for folks, so just wanted to make that known.
Any other further requests to speak? I would add, just to that point on recycling, because I know it's something we've all talked at length about, and had probably many conversations with many residents, and we're going to have more. I would ask for an implementation plan be brought forth to the council as it relates to communication and various aspects of the implementation, which I think myself and city staff are. myself and city staff are happy to work on and present, so that way there is clear direction about when things are happening, since there is a few months between now and receipt of the truck. Well, provided that the council approves this tonight, so I will just add that to, uh, to the sort of work plan for us. Any further requests to speak? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. The motion was to approve the two reports with the balance, the balance of the reports minus eight, nine, eleven, and twelve. Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays. Move into, uh, discussion, or I entertain a motion. Floor is open.
I would like to recognize Brian Slinkman to talk on item number eight, consider approval of a chronic nuisance ordinance.
Brian, want to come to the podium and introduce yourself and your address, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Dolan, for allowing me to speak. Um, my name's Brian Slinkman. I have a few rental properties in Wisconsin Rapids. One of them is in Mr. Dolan's territory at twelve ten Washington Street. This nuisance ordinance, I just have a few concerns, and I understand what you're trying to accomplish, and I can appreciate that. There's drug houses, there's consistent problems with people throughout the city, and I, I can understand that, but with, with most things, there's unintended consequences, and that's what I'm here to talk about today. My concern is currently there's no notice system in place. I could have a problem at a rental property right now, and I wouldn't know that. We're moving into an ordinance that, um, has some strong teeth in it for something that we were kind of walking into an unknown, at least as far as property owners. One concern I have, say I do have a property at one of my property, or a problem at one of my properties, but the tenant has a mental disability. They call nine-one-one consistently. Uh, although I may not know that, um, that could turn into a nuisance property. I could be a nuisance landlord, and I may not be able to evict them, because they could be a protected class. That makes a pretty strong concern on my part. If we can evict them, where do they go? They're going to move from my place into one of Shane's places, one of Charlie's places, one of Chad's. The intent is to screen better, but if we're all screening better, isn't that going to create a number of people that don't have a place to go? Could that increase the chances of, of creating slum lords that, that do cater to these people and just deal with some fines? Often, people that are having problems in their life, such as marital, financial problems, evicting them isn't going to help. Um, I, I think we should try and find a solution prior to that. There are a handful of people in this room and people in the city that are willing to invest in rough properties, improve them, increase tax base. We lose incentive to do that by increasing, um, risk that we take on in this. This is a business to us, and we treat it like a business. Isn't what we're talking about today a nuisance person problem and not a nuisance property problem? And I'm afraid we're tying these concerns to the property and property owner as opposed to the person. I guess what I'd like to see happen today is I'd like to see this table go back to the committee, and I'd like to see the association, the Rental Owner Association, more involved with this, to see if we can work out a plan that's, that's acceptable to all. Again, I can appreciate where you're coming from and I, and what you're trying to accomplish. That makes total sense to me. If that's not possible today, I'd ask for some changes to this, if possible. If I'm understanding this properly, and again, I didn't know about this nuisance ordinance until about three or four hours before the Finance Committee meeting, so I, I jumped in. I couldn't make it there that night, but I've been reading it over, watching the video of the, of that meeting and trying to understand. If I understand it properly, there's no notice given to the landlord until the third and final event. So, again, I won't know until we're to that point where I have to create a plan, possibly evict or do something. The ten percent rule on page one, letter C, number three, says that if, if you have problems, add three premises or ten percent of your available premises. My concern is I have nine properties. I could have a problem at one property, and now I'm considered a nuisance landlord for all of my properties. Do I take the risk on of getting notices, fines, whatever you want to, uh, call them, because the police are called to a different one of my properties now the first time, because I already have one problem at a property? Think of a guy like, and I'll call out Shane Rousch, because he has a significant number of properties in this town. He's, he can hit three pretty quickly. If you have a hundred and fifty properties, it's easily, it's easy to get to three problem properties, and I don't know that's necessarily Shane's fault, but it's putting a lot of pressure on him. Um, if you go to page two, number four, when I talk about enforcement action, and if I'm understanding this correctly, this is enforcement action possibly against the landlord, item number one is arrest. And I don't know that I should take on the risk of being arrested, because I have a person that's causing a problem at a property that I own. If you go to page four, letter G. The chief or chief inspector or his or her designee may accept, reject, or work with the owner to modify the proposal at his or her discretion. It, it gives that person a lot of authority. What if Chief Hoyer has a problem with me? It's kind of a joke, because we get along great, but what if he does have a problem with me? He has a lot of authority there to handle that. Um, page five, um, under H. If there are fines, they can be collected as a special charge, where the city may impose a lien on the property. It, it, it's similar to water and light, where they can just go on our tax bill we're, we're forced to pay. If someone owes me money, I have to go the approach of going to court, getting a judgment filed, trying to file collections. It just puts a lot of pressure on us. I guess some other questions I have and things that I have concerns on is I'd like to see the council come to us, especially as an association early on, so we have a chance to try and work together. Couple of questions I have, are businesses included in this? I'm guessing if business owners, and I'll throw in the bar owners, if the bar owners knew that this could affect them, every one of them would be in the stands tonight. If you have three calls at a bar in six months, I, I would say if you don't have three calls to a bar in six months, and, chief, maybe I'm wrong, I'm guessing most bars in, in the city have three calls in six months. Are they considered a nuisance? How do they get away from that? And if they take on fines, are they going to be in a position of having to, uh, what, what kind of fines are we looking at? It's very open-ended, and could that initially shut them down because of the expenses involved? I, I don't know the answer to that. CBRF's another one that could be a, a major concern with a lot of calls coming in. Um, when I looked at the examples at the Finance Committee, I was watching the video today, um, a couple of the properties on there, one of them was what appeared to me, I know some, some addresses were blocked out, would appear to be probably Northwest Journey, I believe, the one hundred block of Twenty Fourth Street. It was either that or the Department of Corrections. Again, that's going to be tough. If it's one of those two, to try and get that to stop happening will be a tough, tough situation. The other one is Maples Motel, I would assume, the forty-seven hundred block of Eighth Street South. It's either that or Quick Trip that has gotten a number of calls. I can appreciate where you're trying to go, but you start imposing fines on these business owners, and they're just going to be in a tough position. So, um, I guess that's all I have to say for now. Um, I'm, I'm somewhat speaking on behalf of the association. I've only talked to a couple of members of the association. There may be others that want to speak, but I just wanted to put my two cents in. Thank you.
Brian, before you leave the podium, you offered some specific modifications or enhancements to the ordinance in everything you've said. Are there any alderpersons that have questions about any of the specific modifications that have been proposed to the ordinance? Before you sat down, I wanted to make sure, and-
Appreciate it.
This is the opportunity to amend as well, so I want to make sure that, that, that's being addressed. Alder, attorney, show.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out something on page two, the enforcement action, that isn't, that, that regard is regarding the nuisance activity and whether an enforcement action happens as a result of that activity, so that's, that's not the penalty for, we're not going to put you in jail. That's, those are instances where if someone's arrested for one of these activities, or cited for one of these activities, or summons a complaint, or a warning, order to obey the code violation, that's, then that's counts as a nuisance activity enforcement action. You understand?
Yep, that makes sense.
It's, it's not arresting, arresting the landlords.
That, that makes sense, and if I, can I speak to that?
Sure.
Okay. Couple of things, one of the things on here is loitering or curfew violation, so that would say that there could be a juvenile at a property that gets three written warnings for a curfew violation, and that could cause a nuisance property. So, again, that, I think there's just so much in here that creates a concern, in my opinion.
Thank you. Did you have anything in further you want to address?
Well, I guess, let's take that as an example. Uh, okay, so there are three, uh, curfew violations of the, of, at a certain residence. Um, and then what you, the landlord or the owner is going to be noticed, and what, what do you think that abatement plan would, would be like? It's not going to be, you know, mow your lawn, or, uh, I mean, it's going to be regarding the activity that happened, and it's probably like, well, maybe you shouldn't have kids hanging out at your, you know, do better at this. I mean, the, the abatement plan is only going to be as serious as, as a violation, and obviously if there are minor violations of things, then, you know, I think, I mean, I think in every event, the city is going to work with, with the owner, and that's the whole idea of this, is to, instead of continually finding the, the violator and, and them, it's, it's to bring the premises in that is having these, that is causing the extra pain, uh, the extra services and the strain on code enforcement and police department time, and try to find out what, what's going on here. And I think it's, you know, that's, that's the first step, and I think that's the main thing that this is about. And obviously, if things keep happening, then there might be more steps that need to be taken, but I think the good faith of the landlords or the property owner is certainly taken into effect when, when the, the police meets with, with that person for, to talk about abatement, or, you know, plans to, to stop these things from happening. But I don't know if the chief has any, or anyone else has any thoughts on that, but-
Thank you, Sue. I'll just echo quick. Brian, really, and for all of our landlords, we're really looking to work together on properties that become nuisance in the, in the volume of times that we would have to go back. So, first and foremost, we don't, we want this to be in place so that for those that truly want to just thumb their nose up in the air and not do anything about the problem areas, we have something to address that. Um, our intention is to work with landlords, to do an early notification system. We do need to work together to get a best, better system in place around that, but it's to take care of these problems early, address them early, work with landlords to produce a plan to work around these early, um, so that we can have positive outcomes and not always having to go back with a drain of resources, um, that we, that we have now. But those aren't necessarily with landlords or business owners that care. Those are the ones that really don't want to comply with, with us at this point in time, and we need to be able to address those. But on the front end, we really want to be working together, um, to make sure that we have, you know, that you've got good renters, that, you know, we're responding to and sharing information with you and other landlords, so that they can base good decisions on their next steps and, you know, and working with their tenants, if, if that makes sense.
It does. Can I respond?
No cross-debate, but if you have another follow-up question or something that might be-
Um, what I'd like to reiterate a point from early on, though, I, I can appreciate that, and I'd say ninety-five percent of the landlords out there do want to definitely work with the police. That's the last thing I want, is a problem, problem at one of my properties, but I think we could start with just a notice system, see how that turns out, and then make a step to an ordinance that puts some teeth in it from there. There may be some bad people that aren't following through, but I think this is putting a lot of, of weight on landlord's shoulders that may not deserve it right away.
Thank you, Brian. Anyone else, uh, I guess, I don't see any of the requests to speak on the council. Are there any other individuals on the council that wish to speak? Alder Person Kellogg?
Um, I contacted Wassa, and this ordinance actually mirrors Wassa. What I think is some flaws in the sense like Wassa has the penalties for the first offense and so forth, and I like the, I don't see the process. And here it says, there's going to be a hearing, it's going to go in, uh, to the common council. Well, is it going to go directly to the common council, or does it go to the Finance and Property Committee first, and then it comes to the common council? And what are the fees? I mean, here the penal, um, penalties, first offense, any person who shall be violated in any provision of this char, uh, chapter, or any regulation, rule, or order, um, may be, um, hereunder, um, shall forfeit a thousand dollars or more than, or, uh, and no more than two thousand dollars, five hundred, two thousand five hundred dollars. Whoa, that's a lot of money. I mean, what are, what are we going to do for the penalties, and what are the costs? So, I think, I would like to suggest, um, taking what was said, that it seems like we were, we're, it, this is verbatim, almost Wassa. Why don't we get, um, representatives from the landlords and some of the businesses and sit down with, um, the common council or whomever, and give them some, a chance to have input, because, um, it affects them. We see it from one pair of lens, they see it from another pair of lens. Let's, let's just postpone this for a month and let them have input, um, and see if there's any tweaking of it or, or what have you. I see no problem with that.
I'll make one quick comment, Alder Person Kellogg. I know personally, I know the chief and, um, other city staff have had a number of conversations with the Landlord Association over the last year and a half, two years, on this subject, um, and I understand it, it's a divisive, maybe, conversation sometimes because people see the need for it, some people don't see the need for it, so certainly appreciate your comments, but I want to make sure that the body knows that there's been a number of conversations with the association, uh, on this, and, and it's been a number of weeks since we've had our, um, Finance and Property Committee meeting, uh, here, that if there were specific concerns that should have been brought forth, I, I don't, I haven't seen any, and I don't know if anybody else has seen any specific ones prior to the conversation tonight, so-
Well, there was one concern that was expressed by one of the individuals. He talked about, this is on page two, five, A. He talked about harassment. I mean, this person, from what I heard at that meeting, was, uh, the neighbor kept calling on his neighbor, on this person, for every little thing. I mean, the police showed up three times a week, or every two weeks, uh, several times. And it seems to me that harassment goes both ways. I mean, if a neighbor is calling on a number of neighbors and harassing them for all these items, and we have new phone system, and we, we can determine who called, and, and nine-one-one can determine who called, let's find that person who's, um, making these false claims, and, and that could be incorporated, because I think that individual should be considered. Um, and there might be other cases in the city that I don't know about, but, um, and I, and I appreciate people looking it over, but one more look at, uh, and kick at the can doesn't hurt. And also incorporate the procedures that have to follow. Hearing, hearing in front of who, and the pen, and penalties and costs that are involved, I think would get everything laid out. That's my opinion.
Alder Person Rayom, you're next.
I was going to speak, but I get, uh, I, I'm in favor of sending this back to the committee. I agree, I guess one more kick at the can, um, one, one more month wouldn't hurt. I had, I had a couple contacts of, uh, actually, uh, three times during a six-month period that it should be go to twelve months instead of six months, uh, because they, six months was too short a time. So, uh, uh, I, I think it should go back. I guess I'll move to send it back to committee.
We have a motion to send it back to the Finance and Property Committee. Is there a second? Second by Alder Person Kellogg. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing no request to speak, please cast your ballots.
Can I?
I'm sorry? We're already in the process to vote. Did you have a comment?
Well, I'm-
You can hold it up by not hitting confirm.
Huh?
You can hold it up to not make confirm, but voting has already been called, so technically I shouldn't allow any comment. Motion carried, six ayes, two nays, to send that back to committee. So, to appear, I'd understand at the next Finance and Property Committee meeting, possibly the regular meeting, if there's a special between now and then. Item number nine remains, uh, that's the, consider amending section one four zero seven, chapter fourteen, building code. Floor is open. There's, uh, I don't see, anyone wishes to make a motion?
Is there anybody in the audience that would want to speak?
I don't see anybody in the audience who wants to speak. Anybody, uh, have a request to speak? I don't see anybody wishing to speak on the body here. Floor is open for motion, or request to speak. Councilmembers, what are your wishes regarding item number nine?
Well, me-
We have a motion to approve by Kellogg. We have a motion to approve by Kellogg. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Zerflu. If you could just hit your buttons appropriately, thank you. We'll move into discussion. Anyone wishing to speak? Alderperson Reom, you're first.
Just what is the amendment, I guess, to make it clear to everybody that's watching, I guess.
You're requesting a point of clarification. There, the motion, or the item was to consider amending. The Finance and Property Committee did, chose to, to not amend, and they, to move forward the original.
Okay.
Seeing no further requests to speak, we have a motion on the floor. Please cast your ballots. Motion carried, seven ayes, one nay. Move into item number 11, is the consideration of the sale of excess remnant of city property located at the northeast corner of Riverview Expressway and Lincoln Street to QuickTrip to be contingent upon QuickTrip Incorporated obtaining all necessary approvals and permits, including a conditional use permit for their proposed development. I would point of clarification that this item has no bearing on the action that was previously sent back, in the sense that any approvals of this body would be necessary before any of this became necessary. But I understand you all voted to amend the motion to hold that one out. I would entertain a motion on item 11.
I'll make a motion that we leave it as stands and vote on it.
We have a motion to approve the, the action to sale, sell the property at the Finance and Property Committee's direction. And is there a second? There's a second by Zerflu. Move into discussion. Any further discussion? Seeing no discussion, please cast your ballots. Motion carried, seven ayes, one nay. We'll move into item number 12, review and consideration of furniture replacement proposals for mayor's office and city hall lobbies. Council members, what are your wishes regarding item number 12?
I'd make, I'd make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by Ferkey to approve. Is there a second? We have a second by Hep. Move into discussion. Alderperson Reom, you're first.
I've had a few calls on this, maybe we all have. And it just, not that maybe new furniture and that, that is needed, but that when people look at what the cost of some of those are, they question that something that would, that would do the same thing would cost less. I don't know, I don't think they're against getting the new furniture, it's just what's in the, the price of what they are, of it is. So I just, I just wanted to say, say that, and I'm, I'm going to vote against it. I think, I think that we could get furniture at a cheaper price than that. That, that would do the job and be good furniture, not to fall apart or anything like that in a year and a half or something. So that's all.
See no further requests to speak. Move into a vote. Please cast your ballots. Motion defeated, five nays to three ayes. We'll move into item number 25B, which is the Public Works Committee meeting held May 9. Alderperson Reom, the floor is yours.
Thank you, your honor. The Public Works Committee met at 5:30 PM on May 9, 2016, in the first floor conference room in City Hall. Committee member Coth was absent. A list of others present is on file in the clerk's office. Item one, the meeting was called to order at 6:00 PM. Item two, First Street North Open House occurred from 5:30 to 6:00 PM, so actually it was an open house for people to come in if they wanted to talk about, look at the drawings for that and the meeting. Official, the regular meeting of council of the committee started at 6:00. Item three, hold public hearings and consider final resolutions for the installation of municipal improvements, which shall include curb and gutter, sidewalk, concrete driveway approaches, and permanent street surfacing on First Street North from Apricot Street to Levine Avenue. At 6:00 PM, the public hearing began with a short history of this section of roadway, the need for the project and the proposed scope of work. All in favor of the project, Alderperson Kellogg and Reom, all opposed to project none. Public hearing ended at 6:04 PM. There was a motion to second to approve the final resolution for improvements on First Street North from Apricot Street to Levine Avenue, and the motion carried. Item four, the DPW monthly report was reviewed. Discussions occurred on high priority capital projects versus low priority projects, and how projects are chosen. Joe Terry discussed the current infrastructure replacement levels are currently about one-third of where they need to be. Under this condition, low priority projects are hard to get to. Item five, review and consider approval of the low qualified bidder for the 2016 asphalt paving contract. American Asphalt is the recommended contractor. They were the only bidder in the amount of $195,462. There's a motion to second toward the 2016 asphalt paving contract to American Asphalt, the motion carried. Item six, review and consider approval of the low qualified bidder for the 2016 curb and gutter and sidewalk maintenance contract. SD Ellen Becker Incorporated was the lowest of three bidders in the amount of $244,763.50. There's a motion to second toward the 2016 curb and gutter and sidewalk maintenance contract to SD Ellen Becker Incorporated, the motion carried. Item seven, review and consider approval of the low qualified bidder for the 2016 concrete street patching contract. CPR Incorporated was the lowest of two bidders in the amount of $285,044. There's a motion to second toward the 2016 concrete street patching contract to CPR Incorporated, and the motion carried. Item eight, the MS4 annual report was reviewed. Item nine, review intersection control evaluation and recommend preferred intersection option for the East Grand Avenue and Lincoln, East Jackson Street intersection. Draft intersection control evaluation was presented. Discussions followed regarding life cycle costs, safety and flow of the traffic between three intersection alternatives, traffic signals, always stop, and single lane roundabout. Estimated costs for the alternatives range from $360,000 to $840,000. This item is proposed to be brought back for a committee decision next month. Item 10, consider a preliminary resolution for sidewalk ceiling system improvements on Third Avenue North between West Grand Avenue and West Jackson Street for 320 West Grand Avenue LLC. There's a motion to second to approve the preliminary resolution for municipal improvements to the sidewalk slash ceiling system at 320 West Grand Avenue, and the motion carried. Item 11, review and approve the 2017 street and infrastructure projects' priorities for survey and engineering. The following projects were presented from highest to lowest priority. A, First Street North, Poplar to City Limits. Item B, Washington Street, Eighth Street North to Thirteenth Street. C, Van Buren Street, Eighth Avenue North to Tenth Street, Tenth Avenue North. D, High Street, Seventh Avenue North to Tenth Avenue North and Thirteenth Avenue North to Seventeenth Avenue North. E, Chase Street, Seventeenth Avenue South to Twenty-first Avenue South. F, Seventh Street, South, Oak Street to Grand Avenue Street, Avenue. G, Smith Street, Railroad Street to Riverview Street. H, Twentieth Street, South Oak Street to Chestnut Street. There's a motion to second to approve the street and infrastructure project priorities for 2017, motion carried. 12, review proposed recycling ordinance language. There's a motion to second to approve the proposed recycling ordinance language, and the motion carried. Item 13, the referral list was reviewed with the following items removed from 2016, numbers 23 and 24. Alderperson Kellogg referred banner supports at entry points to the city, so that's on our list now. Item 14, there was a motion to adjourn a second, and the motion carried. The meeting adjourned at 6:50 PM. And with that, your honor, I'd move for adoption of the report.
To approve by Reom, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Coth. Please hit your button. We have a second by Coth. Any requests to speak on the report? See no further requests to speak. Please cast your ballots. Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays. Move into item C, the Human Resources Committee meeting held May 3. Alderperson Ferkey.
Thank you. The Human Resources Committee met May 3 at 4:00 PM, and that was Tuesday, May 3 again, in the third floor conference room at City Hall. All members were present. Also present were Beth Pocanowits, Tim DeSorcy, Mayor Verwink, and Wisconsin Rapids City Times reporter Joe Bachman. Item one was called to order. The meeting was called to order at 4:00 PM by Chairman Todd Ferkey. Item two, in open session, the committee will vote to go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.85, par. 1, par. C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. A motion was made by Alderperson Kellogg and seconded by Alderperson Ferkey to go into closed session as noted above. Roll call vote was taken. With all voting in the affirmative, that motion passed. Item B, in closed session as noted above, the committee discussed the non-union employees' performance in the engineering department and considered a recommendation for promotion. A motion was made by Alderperson Ferkey and seconded by Alderperson Kellogg to go to return to open session, and that motion passed. Item C, the committee returned to open session to make recommendations regarding item 2B. A motion was made by Alderperson Ferkey, seconded by Alderperson Stack to approve a promotion for design engineer number one to design engineer number two, retroactive to January 1 of 2016, and that motion passed. Item number three was to approve a reclassification and salary range for the Director of Innovation and Technology position. A motion was made by Alderperson Ferkey and seconded by Alderperson Kellogg to approve a reclassification of the Director of Innovation and Technology from a grade 17 to a grade 19 with a salary range of $77,355 to $87,521. That motion passed. See job description, which includes additional supervisory responsibilities, and that is attachment one. Item number four was to consider a referral for an authorization for the Human Resources Director to sign documents on behalf of the City of Wisconsin Rapids Growth Health and Dental Insurance Plan. A motion was made by Alderperson Kellogg and seconded by Alderperson Ferkey to grant continual authorization to the Finance and Human Resources Directors to sign Health and Dental Insurance Plan Administration documents to effectuate changes as approved by the council, and that motion passed. Item number five was adjournment. A motion was made by Alderperson Ferkey and seconded by Alderperson Kellogg to adjourn. The meeting was adjourned at 4:32 PM. With that, I would offer the May 3 Human Resources Committee meeting minutes for your approval.
The motion to approve by Ferkey, second by Stack. Jim, if you could hit your button, please. Move into discussion. Are there any requests to speak on the Human Resources Committee report? Seeing no requests to speak, move into a vote. Please cast your ballots. Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays. Item number 26, reports of the Municipal Board of Canvassers meeting held April 8 concerning the results of the April 5 spring election.
Thank you, Mayor Verwink. The Municipal Board of Canvassers for the City of Wisconsin Rapids met at 4:10 PM on Friday, April 8, 2016, in the city clerk's office at City Hall. Members Paul Shabelski, Sue Bravick, Veronica Klisch, and Peggy Montag were present. Item number one, the meeting was called to order. Item number two, the board canvassed the results of the April 5 spring election and presidential preference vote. The total number of ballots cast at Mead School was 1,620. The number of poll book entries was 1,620. There were 148 absentee ballots, of which two were rejected. There were zero provisional ballots. The results of the municipal contest are as follows. For the Office of District One Alderperson, Lee Pow Tao received 207 votes. Joseph M. Zerflu received 386 votes. For the Office of District Two Alderperson, Lee H. Graff received 277 votes. Todd T. Ferkey received 347 votes. For the Office of Municipal Judge, Peter A. Castenholtz received 1,066 votes. For the Office of Mayor, Zachary J. Verwink received 840 votes. Robert Nash received 707 votes. How School, the total number of ballots cast at How School was 2,517. The number of poll book entries was 2,517. There were 298 absentee ballots, of which five were rejected. There were zero provisional ballots. The results of the municipal contest are as follows. For the Office of District Four Alderperson, Tom Reom received 445 votes. For the Office of District Six Alderperson, Greg C. Hep received 517 votes. For the Office of District Eight Alderperson, Terry Dolan received 90 votes. For the Office of Municipal Judge, Peter A. Castenholtz received 1,638 votes. For the Office of Mayor, Zachary J. Verwink received 1,375 votes. Robert Nash received 1,037 votes. Grove School, the total number of ballots cast at Grove School was 1,925. The number of poll book entries was 1,925. There were 296 absentee ballots, of which three were rejected. There were zero provisional ballots. The results of the municipal contest are as follows. For the Office of District Eight Alderperson, Terry Dolan received 518 votes. For the Office of Municipal Judge, Peter A. Castenholtz received 1,294 votes. For the Office of Mayor, Zachary J. Verwink received 1,082 votes. Robert Nash received 777 votes. The total votes cast for each candidate are as follows. For the Office of District One Alderperson, Lee Pow Tao received 207 votes. Joseph M. Zerflu received 386 votes. For the Office of District Two Alderperson, Lee H. Graff received 277 votes. Todd T. Ferkey received 347 votes. For the Office of District Four Alderperson, Tom Reom received 445 votes. For the Office of District Six Alderperson, Greg C. Hep received 517 votes. For the Office of District Eight Alderperson, Terry Dolan received 608 votes. For the Office of Mayor, Zachary J. Verwink received 3,297 votes. Robert Nash received 2,521 votes. For the Office of Municipal Judge, Peter A. Castenholtz received 3,998 votes. The meeting adjourned at 5:10 PM on Friday, April 8.
Alderpersons, what are your wishes regarding item 26? We have a motion to accept by Kellogg, second by Reom. Move into discussion. Seeing no discussion or requests to speak, please cast your ballots. Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays. Move into item 27, reports. Item one, the Southwood Connie Airport Commission held April 7. Item two, McMillan Memorial Library Board of Trustees held March 20, March 16 and April 20. Item two, McMillan Memorial Library Board of Trustees held March 16th and April 20th. Item three, the City Treasurers Monthly Report for January and February. Item four, the Park and Recreation Commission held March 30th. Item five, the Wisconsin Rapids Housing Authority held March 30th. Item six, the Wisconsin Rapids Housing Authority Resident Advisory Board held February 16. Item seven, the Wisconsin Rapids Fire Department Monthly Report for April. Item eight, the Wisconsin Rapids Police Department Monthly Report for April. Item nine, the Waterworks and Lighting Commission, Commission Regular and Special Meetings held April 13th. Item 10, the Wastewater Treatment Commission held May 4th. Item 11, the Police and Fire Commission held April 13th and May 11th. Council members, what are your wishes regarding the reports?
Make a motion to accept the reports.
We have a motion to approve by Coth. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ferkey. Any discussion on the reports? Alderperson Rayom.
A question, one, and a comment on a couple, and maybe, it has to do with library. March 16th, and maybe I've seen it and forgot, but a reorganization of the staff as recommended by the Personnel Committee. Can we get, I guess, a sheet with what all took place, or what the reorganization was? Maybe I missed it in a previous thing, so that's just a question.
Which report was that?
The library, they presented a proposal on the reorganization of the staff as recommended by the Personnel Committee, and that was approved. I just am wondering what reorganization was.
Fair question. I don't have the answer. Does Alderperson Kellogg have any further clarification on that?
Yes. The director of the library looked at the staff, and working with the staff, reorganized the staff. There's no additional employees, but it's just realigning the staff to work with teams in the past, and better supervision of the staff itself. And it makes sense with the team approach that they developed. And I could get a copy of how it was rearranged, but in the past, it was kind of just, it was elongated, and it was a burden for supervision, and now it's compressed with teams and better organization, and the board accepted unanimously at the time.
For Dave, Fire Department, just overtime there. It looks like what you guys wanted is working out there with the numbers that I have in the minutes here.
Yes. I think you'll see even more as the summer goes along, and we actually have more vacation time, but we're seeing probably around $10,000 a month right now. So, the first three months were about $35,000 less than we were last year.
Okay. I just wanted to make a comment, because it is working so far. Last, I would like, probably, well, if I can, it's from Water and Light, but I'd like to see the council itself take this under consideration, so it'd be a referral. But Water and Light, and they do it every year, I think that it's a sponsor of the city band, and that we have the city band, and we are the city, that somehow the, I think the council, and maybe we have to put it in the budget for next year, whatever, but it's 250 bucks to sponsor the city band that one night, and a lot of people that go, it's a chance for different aldermen to go there. I go, it's not far from Robbins Park from where I live, so I can walk if I want to under the highway. But I think, I'd like a referral to go to whichever committee to look into the sponsor, to sponsor the city band one night a year.
Are there any further requests to speak? See no further requests to speak, we'll move into a vote, please cast your ballots. Confirm your vote, Steve. Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays. Move into item number 28, is a referral of agenda items to committees or the council. Seeing none listed, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Stand adjourned. Thank you all for being here. Have a nice evening.